Call to order the special meeting, committee of the whole, roll call.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
The rise of the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 162-63 South Lilly Cash Road. We're seeking a motion to open a public hearing regarding an annexation agreement and annexation of approximately three-quarter acre known as 162-63 South Lilly Cash Road.
That is my motion.
That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Yes, thank you. This matter is coming before the village board this evening, a formal request to basically annex approximately three-quarters of an acre. The property is currently just south of Todd's Auto Body Shop, which is located on Route 30. This property is currently being used for a single-family home. What Todd's is proposing as part of this annexation and special use for Auto Body Shop is to purchase this single-family home lot for future expansion. Their plans are to basically expand their parking lot. You'll see in your package there is a landscape plan. The applicant has been working with staff to basically make efforts to preserve a fair number of mature trees on the subject site. Somewhere down the road, potentially, the house will be demolished and a future parking lot would be expanded. This did go before the plant commission. There were no general objections from the residents itself. As it relates to the annexation agreement, the annexation agreement is pretty straightforward with one exception. The applicant is requesting a waiver of all the applicable impact fees. One thing that staff has raised potentially is perhaps a sunset clause of a period of time to allow that waiver to basically take effect but not to be in perpetuity for the 20 years of the annexation agreement, which I don't think is an issue. The applicant has identified that they plan to proceed with the expansion within the foreseeable future, i.e. next year or two years. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report. Be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
This is a public hearing. Are there any public comments? There are no public comments. We'd be seeking a motion to adjourn the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting.
So move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any comments or questions on items C through D? There are no comments or questions. Would be seeking a motion to vote on items 2C through 2G by omnibus vote.
So move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to adopt ordinance number 3174, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement. Ordinance number 3175, annexing the subject property. Ordinance number 3176, rezoning the subject property to B3. Ordinance number 3177, approving a special use for Todd's Auto Body Shop, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report. And to approve the final plat, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
So move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. To approve items 2C through 2G. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is CBS Outdoor. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village president to execute a settlement agreement with CBS Outdoor.
That is my motion.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have a question. Seems the monitor is pretty important. It's not us and it's not them. Do we have any idea who the monitor's going to be?
I was going to ask you to... No, I'm kidding. No, we haven't settled in on that as yet. We wanted to get the agreement in place and then we'll move forward on that.
But the monitor is of our choosing.
Yes, the monitor is of our choosing, correct.
Oh, it's our choice. They pay, but our choice.
They pay, we choose.
Excellent. Nice.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the village president to execute a settlement agreement with CBS Outdoor. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Call to order the committee of the whole, roll call.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Rippey?
Here.
Trustee Bonucci?
Here.
Trustee Fay?
Here.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the joint workshop with the plant commission held on July 28.
So move.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Can I make a comment for... Since it was a joint meeting, I think the minutes captured the discussion very well, so congratulations to our clerk for doing a really nice job on them.
Presidential comments?
I have none this evening.
Trustees' comments?
I have a brief comment. I had the opportunity to be out yesterday along with Trustee Bonucci at the riverfront for the volunteer action day there, and I want to thank all the people who came out. The amount of progress that was made on that land, turning it into a green space that will benefit the entire community was tremendous. I want to especially thank Rob Epley and Justin Met for their leadership on that board.
And bridging on that, the Brewers Fest is this weekend, and that's part of the reason of the big cleanup, so we're looking forward to that event, another great festival in Plainfield.
Are there any other trustee comments? This would be the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes per topic. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is the Cotswolds at Grand Park.
Yes, this matter is coming before the board on a concept plan. What the applicant this evening is looking for is for the input of the village board. To refresh your memory, the proposed property is located on 127th Street, just west of the Ridge Road. As you recall, there was a previous townhome project called the Cotswolds, which was approved back in 2005 for a total of 116 townhome units. The applicant is proposing this evening input from the village board on converting the balance of those townhomes into 49 single-family homes. They're looking for the input of the board on their conceptual plan. What they're proposing to do is basically, again, to construct 49 single-family homes within the Cotswolds property itself. The proposed street configuration, which has been constructed, would not be modified, so the street configuration would generally would remain the same. There would be no major changes to the street configuration. What they're proposing to do is, again, to convert the balance of the 116-unit townhome project into 49 single-family homes. What they're looking for is input of the village board this evening is, A, the support, conceptually, converting these entitled townhomes to single-family homes within the Grand Park development. Number B is the board generally comfortable with the lot sizes. The average lot size within this proposed project would be approximately 8,000 square feet. The minimum would be approximately 6,000 square feet. I've incorporated in my staff report a breakdown of setbacks. They are asking directly for relief from the village's setback, specifically side yard setbacks. What staff is generally looking for, again, is input this evening on the conceptual plan. The applicant's actually here with Mr. Rosenova, their attorney. They do have a presentation. They would like to have an opportunity to go through their actual proposed product and the basis for what's being proposed this evening. So with that, perhaps I'll turn it over to council.
Thank you, Michael. Michael, could we switch over? Thank you. Good evening, mayor, trustees. I'm Vince Rosenova, attorney with the law firm of Rosenova and Whitaker, here tonight on behalf of the petitioner, Cahovenian Homes. Also with me this evening, I have Ray Blankenship and Mark Reichovick of Cahovenian, as well as Tom Sieb representing property ownership, Oxford Bank, and I believe a resident of Neighborhood 11, the Cotswold Townhome Development, who we recently began discussions with, as recently as last week, to discuss our proposal. As Michael alluded to or stated in his staff report, Neighborhood 11 is part of the Grand Park Master Community, approved in 2005 as part of the annexation agreement, envisioned as 116 townhomes on 17 acres. To date, only 24 of these units have been constructed. The remaining 84 units have not been touched since 2007. Despite all public improvements from water, sewer, roadways being constructed, the property has sat dormant, which we think is indicative of the market demand. To adjust to the current market conditions, Cahovenian is proposing the 49 single-family homes to replace the 84 townhomes which have sat dormant for seven years. We feel that this modification is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan for this area and that it envisions this property being developed with a density of four to six units per acre. If our proposal were to move forward with the 49 single-family homes, we would bring the density down from the currently approved 7.3 units per acre down to just over four, 4.2 units per acre on the remaining 11 and 1/2 acres. Looking at our land plan, the most important thing to point out is there's a clear line of demarcation between the existing townhomes to the north, which are already constructed. You can see the general outline of eight buildings, which are all occupied by three units to comprise the 24 existing homes. Right now, on lots 48 and 49, there's an existing foundation for a townhome, which is set vacant, kind of an eyesore, definitely a hazard. We're proposing to incorporate that into our single-family community. Timber Drive then creates a nice line of demarcation to make sure that there's going to be no commingling of townhomes amongst single-family. We're going to view this, more or less, as a new adjacent community in harmony with the surrounding properties. Also important to point out is the availability of the already improved and existing park site to the west. As Michael pointed out, our average lot size is just north of 8,000 square feet. Our range is from 6,000 all the way almost up to 15,000 square feet. Our lot widths are going to be generally in excess of 55 feet with a minimum lot width of 50 feet. In regard to the architecture, since we were here last, the village has codified the architectural design standards, which we have reviewed in detail, and Ray was kind enough to put this slide together with the checkmarks depicting that we're going to meet and exceed all of the village's new codified architectural design guidelines. In regard to the floor plans, we're going to propose four floor plans ranging from approximately 2,200 square feet up to almost 3,000 square feet, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car, three-car option. We anticipate that the entering price point will be in the high twos, $290, all the way up to almost four at the high end, and we anticipate that the average all-in will be in the 330s. In regard to the architecture, looking at the first floor plan, the Hazelwood, this one will run about 2,200 square feet. As you could see, Cahovenian offers multiple elevations for each floor plan to make sure that there's visual interest, architectural amenities, options for the homeowners to select, and we avoid the monotony. The second floor plan, the Thompson, you could see the various elevations a homeowner could select. This one's in the 2,568 square feet. Moving on to the Linwood, which is just north of 2,700 square feet, and then the Columbia, which is the largest, which is 2,989 square feet, 3,000 square feet for all intensive purposes. So with that, we thank you for your time this evening. Ray, Mark, and I are available to answer any questions, and we appreciate any feedback we receive.
One question already. You talked to the homeowner association. The townhomes are entirely different style. What kind of comments did you get from the homeowners?
Positive, very positive. And we have one homeowner here who we're thankful is in attendance, and she would probably be more believable as to her thoughts than me speaking on her behalf, so I would welcome any comments. But we've already began those conversations because just like Fairfield Ridge, we understand how important it is that the homeowners with the vested interest be brought into the process early.
Seven years will do that.
Yeah.
Couple other comments. From my... The architectural guidelines are extremely important from my point of view, and you said you're going to conform to all those. And Mr. Garrigan, you have everything you wanted there?
Yeah, I think that basically the guidelines generally... I'm sorry, that the proposed elevations as outlined, basically, again, at least on the front elevations, meet the guidelines. Regarding the side elevations and rear elevations, as you've heard, the representations by the applicants, they will meet those standards. They're not reflected on the elevations here, but they've made representation that they will meet those standards. So from that perspective, I think they do meet the minimum requirements of the standards.
That's important. You asked for four questions to answer. As far as I'm concerned, putting the single-family homes there is fine. If you meet the guidelines, that's number four. I'm less excited about the other two. The... I think 6,000 square-foot lots is probably too small. I don't believe they need to be 12,000, but it seems to me, if you look at the layout, they're pretty much crammed in there. My guess is you could expand that without too much trouble. The other problem I have is with the setbacks. We're waiving all the setbacks, and I also think five feet is not sufficient on the side. I'm not sure you have to give away that much on the front and back as well, but the side bothers me more. If you spread them out a little bit, get bigger lots, maybe that won't be an issue, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. So yes, I like the idea, but I think I'd like to see some improvements in lot size.
Trustee Lamb, what is your position on the average of 8,000 square feet? Is that acceptable?
Marginally so, because you've got at least one that's... The two corner lots are quite large, and so the average isn't as meaningful. I would like to see 8,000 more as a minimum personally. You've got some odd-shaped things, and so they're a lot bigger than the others, so the average doesn't have the meaning to me. I just think 6,000 is awfully small if you're going to have really nice houses, but that's... That's my opinion. That's what it's worth.
We appreciate your opinion, and we're working to utilize the existing infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the roadway. So kind of with those parameters, it kind of laid out. We didn't have the great artistic latitude in the site design.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't have the... Have not played with this, so I can't... I'm just saying, if you're looking for our opinion, my opinion is I'd like to see it expanded some and a little... Not quite as tight. Whether you can do that in that layout, I'm not a position to judge. That's something you guys would have to take a look at and come back. That's where I'm coming from.
I'm in agreement with Trustee Lamb with regard to the lot size as well as the five-foot setback. I think it's just way too low. I have concerns about safety. I have concerns about access to rooftops. I know that the development that you recently took over just to the north here, a resident couldn't even get a ladder up to his chimney because there was not enough room between the homes. So as Trustee Lamb has stated, I think the lot sizes need to come up, and the setback, especially on the side yard, needs to change.
What, Trustee Fay, what would you see as acceptable as far as lot size and side yard setbacks?
I tend to agree with Mr. Lamb, more around 8,000. Setback, side yard setback like 10 feet. See if you can work the development with those standards. I do support the switch from multifamily to single-family.
I would agree with what the other two trustees have said. That's really way too tight in the space. Out of the 49 homes, you have 32 that are under 8,000. So I mean, yes, you can say an average because you've got a couple of big homes here, but that is a point that the other trustees have made, and it's just a little too small, especially for this type of development. And I'm curious, and forgive me because I can't tell from the street, what are the street widths on this? I mean, are these...
There are standard... I mean, there are standard specs of 60 feet right away through Grand Park.
That's fine. I mean, obviously, the layout looks good. I like your product normally. I mean, it's fine. I supported the Fairfield Ridge. I just think that with the design guidelines, especially to fit the neighborhood, and to have the... The lot sizes are just a little too small and a little too tight. Five feet to the next neighbor. I mean, I grew up in Chicago. You could hand something out, one window to the next house over, and it's about the distance, so it's a little too tight.
I think each neighbor would have five feet, so 10 feet of separation?
It's still a little...
It's too tight, is my opinion.
Yeah, just a little too close.
Thank you, Trustee Bonucci. That much better.
Mr. Rosenova, I do support the concept of converting from townhomes to single-family, and you had mentioned that you may have some challenges with the utilities and the way that they're already in place. What might be helpful to help us better understand that challenge that you're having is if maybe somebody can be sent to staff to pass on to the board that actually shows a GIS layout and articulates exactly where the utilities are, and if you have a few different focal points that you just absolutely cannot change, and we're stuck with a few lots that may be lower than the square footage that some of the trustees may be uncomfortable with, it'll help us understand you have absolutely no way to change that, and we're going to have to either deal with that or have townhomes still. So if there are one or two lots that you just absolutely can't change because of the infrastructure, please make sure that information's passed to staff to relate to us.
We appreciate that. We'll work with our engineer and come up with that exhibit.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Rosenova, for the sake of vain repetition, and I can only repeat exactly what other trustees have stated because there's nothing original to specifically state, but if you look at your entire project, and you know what we're looking for, newness in the village of Plainfield, and you know what? You have an interesting idea. The most disinteresting portion of it is the absolute smallness of the lot sizes. They're entirely too small. 65, I looked through and I marked in different numbers, et cetera, et cetera. You have a couple of large lots, and then it declines, which produces an average, but the average is very skewed, skewed to the negative nature. You have to open up all of your houses, in my estimation, as other trustees have stated. The width between the houses, you know, the side lot is entirely unacceptable. As Ms. Bonucci said, she was raised in Chicago, but Chicago has entirely definitions that are different. The village of Plainfield has downtown definitions that are different. This is entirely too close, and it really has to be open, and I know you have the ability to produce that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I will comment, but I'll only comment to say that I essentially join the rest of the board and their feelings. I do believe that five feet is too narrow and join in everything else that was said without repeating it for the ninth time, so thank you.
Trustee Rippey, are you in agreement with the change of use from the townhome product to the single-family?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
I'd like to make one comment. In your display of homes that you're proposing to put on these lots and everything else, I don't see the back of any of them, and that's going to be important for adjoining neighborhoods of what they have to look at, and also the ones that are in the center of what they're going to look at. So I would like to see some sort of design that you're going to have with these backs. And another thing, too, you showed the various types of homes you're going to put in. When you got to the Columbia, which you say is the most expensive, there's very little difference in the units. I mean, we're talking a little bit of monotony. There's not much difference in the homes, at least from my perspective. So I don't know what you're going to do to maybe try to change that, but as Mr. Rassich says, you know, we want something different. We want something that jumps off the page, and I know you gentlemen are all equipped to do same, but I would like to see something that is a little more "I want to really move here because" type units.
Okay, if, when I go back and confer with Ray and Scott, if they're in a position to review and revise the land plan as we move forward, then Ray just acknowledged that he'd be willing to submit the four-sided architecture and take another look at these elevations and see if he could provide anything that will pop off the page a little more.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments? I think we have general direction. From what I'm hearing, 8,000 square feet seems to be the minimum, and 360-degree architecture, which we'll get a look at. And, you know, understanding that, as Trustee Peck mentioned, if there's a one-off lot that can't be made to meet that 8,000, we can take a look at that from a staff level. Okay?
I just have one other comment, too. Now would be the time for any of trustees to have any other questions, because I know in the past, we've had boards that have gone, "I like to see a change in A through G," and then when they reappear before the board, then we're at H through K. So I would just suggest that if anybody else can think of anything they'd like to bring up, now would certainly be the time to do it.
Well, let me throw in something in that case, then. We talked about the side lots, the spacing there. We did not talk about the front and back. Nice to see that you cannot go back with the standard. That's something you need to maybe point out to us. When you go through... If you reconfigure it and so on, I don't know whether you've got space enough to provide the standard front and backyard setbacks or not, but if you can't, then I think it's something we need to understand. So in light of what the mayor said, I'd like to see that covered somewhere, that you've done everything you can, and this is the limitation of that. The side yard, I know you can change. The others, I'm not so sure, because I don't really know how much of the space is being taken up by the house.
You're right. You're right. So the configuration with the roadways and the property depths being what they are, and then you have the building envelope for a certain housing type that we think the market wants, the 2,200 square feet to 3,000 square feet. As you try and increase the setback, then you push in on your buildable envelope and then maybe have a product that won't be received, as we hope it will be. So that's... We could look at it, but just in all honesty, I think that one's going to be exceptionally difficult.
Well, but let's feed us some information on that as well.
And I will say, I'll be a little more understanding of the front and the back setbacks because you're dealing with lots that were designed for townhomes rather than single- because you're dealing with lots that were designed for townhomes rather than single-family, as long as you work on, say, the side setback.
Yeah, 20 feet, 20. That's not bad.
Okay, thank you very much.
And thank you for your time and feedback.
Thank you.
Reminders?
August 19th will be our planning commission meeting. August 25th is our next village board meeting. September 1st, the offices will be closed for Labor Day. How fast that came around. And then September 8th will be our next committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.